Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 24th, 2024 Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings, and members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here. We are joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah, and next we will have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "raise hand" icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please? No one in the gallery? Do we have anyone waiting to join us online?
There's no one online.
Okay. Moving on to consent calendar, we have one item on consent this evening, and that is to approve Planning Commission minutes from our regular meeting, August 27th, 2024. Would any commissioner like to pull the item, or do we have instead a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and thank you for that. We will go on to public hearings tonight. No public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to business items. And our business item, first business item this evening, is electing chair and vice chair of the Planning Commission. And David, can we begin with a staff report?
Yeah, just briefly, the chair and vice chair are supposed to be elected in the first meeting in the fiscal year, which is the beginning of July every year. We have had a busy year, and we missed that opportunity, and so now we're trying to play catch-up. The way the process works, for those of you who don't recall or haven't been through this process before, is that the commission is, you know, able to discuss nominations for chair and vice chair, and then vote them into that position by voice vote, formal vote. You can take both chair and vice chair in one motion if you wish, or you can break them into two separate motions, and it's really up to you all to have a discussion, you know, who's willing, who's interested. You know, do you want to retain the current officers or shake things up a little bit? And so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's basically the outline for how you approach this. Have a discussion amongst yourselves. Someone ultimately will make a motion, and then you take a vote.
Copy that. Are there any questions from any commissioners for David before we go to public comment? Go ahead, Dan.
Can you remind us how long a term is?
Yeah, the terms are annual, so this one will be a little shorter than annual because we're going to be right on target next year for the first meeting in July to do chair and vice chair. But yeah, you basically commit to serving for the year. Having said that, chairs usually kind of get into that role and serve that function for several terms.
Thank you for that. I'm going to open public comment if, well, we have no one in person here, so I suppose I should just check and see if there's anyone on Zoom. Okay, thank you for that. So bringing it back to the commission then, I'd like to open this conversation by just saying that I enjoy the chair role and consider it an honor. I enjoy working with each and every one of you, something that I find engaging and service-oriented, which I like. I wanted to just say to Dan, as vice chair all these many years, just wanted to check in with you first and see if you had any comments as an officer before we open it for general discussion.
No, thank you, Scott. I appreciate the role you've been playing, though. You've done an excellent job, so thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to reappoint you, Scott, as chair and Dan as vice chair.
Thank you, Joel. I would like to counter that motion just slightly and nudge the vice chair onto Matt Simmons if he's willing, if that's agreeable to the group.
I would be willing, and thank you, Dan.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for myself to continue as chair with the change from vice chair from Dan to Matt. We have a second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, everyone. Matt, you may have to leave the lower table, but congratulations.
I don't know how I'm still down here, if I'm being completely honest.
It looks like that may be coming to an end. Okay, I appreciate that discussion and appreciate everyone's support. Moving on now, Item B under our business item section is considering commercial mixed-use standards, and as always, David, can we please begin with a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Tonight, this is sort of a kickoff, if you will, to starting to think in more detail about the commercial standards that we'll be adopting through a public process over the course of the next year or so. But we are in a situation where we now have a brand-new adopted general plan that has a bunch of aspirational policy in it, and we have the implementation, the actual zoning standards that we adopted in 2008 that were based on the previous general plan. And so there are some conflicts. The, you know, most obvious one is the level of density, residential density that's allowed in commercial mixed. There's policy that states that we will not have an upper limit for density, that we're going to use the zoning standards to regulate density configurations in these zones, whereas the Land Use Code specifies a limit on density and it caps it at medium density, which was also amended. And so we have a lot of different conflicts like this. That's a real direct one. We also have some that are, you know, a little bit softer conflicts, conflicts like, we've had discussions over the past seven years or so about loosening commercial mixed standards. One of the issues that's come up time and time again is that the current standards in the Land Use Code state that commercial mixed use can have residential uses above or behind commercial uses that are on the ground floor. And so we, what that essentially means is that you cannot build a residential project in commercial mixed use without providing a full street frontage of commercial uses. And that's been the death knell for several projects that have come forward, and they've said, "We really want to build residential, but, you know, can't quite make commercial work. We've got vacancies in our downtown and other commercial areas already, and so I can't conceive as a developer of building more commercial space that I know is going to be vacant." So that conversation has led to, "Well, maybe we need a little more flexibility in commercial standards." So I did have kind of a, you know, and this stuff is really, you know, when you talk about it in the abstract and you're just thinking in general terms, it has, you know, different conclusions that you reach than when you think about it in more detail. So I'm going to run through a really short presentation that I hope will kind of help to convey the variety of different parcel sizes and how those relate to differences in standards that I think we need to be sensitive to as we adopt new regulations, and I just want to get the Planning Commission thinking about this now. So to start, we've got the, and Juan, if you can pull up onto the screen the projector. Thank you. To start, I want to focus in on sort of the downtown North Town area. Just to orient folks, here's Samoa Boulevard. We've got our downtown center here. Here's North Town and the Gateway area. It's a large block of brown properties over here for new commercial mixed use. And specifically, you know, I want to take a look at this area of the North Town and how that contrasts, you know, the relatively small parcel sizes that you see in that area with maybe some of the Gateway area or the downtown area, the Union Town Shopping Center in particular, where you have much larger parcels and how that translates into different types of mixed use that you might see. So in the North Town, here's a parcel that the owner has come forward and said, "Hey, we want to do mixed uses on 15th and G Streets on that northeast corner there. Ramen shop is going in there currently, and we're really excited about that." But that might be appropriate for a, you know, corner store type of mixed-use development where you have apartments above and you have, you know, maybe some commercial on the ground floor on the corner. Right now, you're required to put it on the entire street frontage, but maybe we want to limit that so that, you know, in some instances, you might literally just have sort of a newsstand like you have in, you know, a New York City corner store. Maybe they sell coffee, maybe they, you know, just sell, you know, papers, but we're letting the market decide, you know, the scope of that and really, you know, trying to drive towards ensuring that there's enough of a population base to ultimately support the kind of commercial that we want to see in our community. You can see in this image, and you're all familiar with G Street, that there are several, even though this is all zoned commercial mixed use and has been zoned for commercial uses, there are several residential uses in this area, and as you, you know, move up and down that street, just like you see in this drawing here, you might have a single-family standalone house that's next to an apartment that has a commercial component to it on the corner, but provide a little bit more flexibility on the mid-block where you might see, you know, in this instance, you know, some single-family residential, or there might be a redevelopment project where, you know, you take some of this vacant space and turn it into, you know, more of a residential setting. So in this area, it might be appropriate to have more small-scale corner markets, and I know that, you know, Commissioner Simmons, excuse me, Vice Chair Simmons, brought up the idea of even in zones that are currently zoned residential, maybe bringing the corner market concept back, and that that could be appropriate and have a similar look and feel to this. Just talked about the residential that's existing there. This is in the Gateway area. This is the AmeriGas site. Basically, it's an entire city block that could be easily redeveloped, relocate AmeriGas somewhere else in Arcata, and you would likely see a much larger scale of residential development in that setting. I put this together just before the meeting, so, you know, if you don't like Whole Foods, I'm sorry, this was a good example of having the type of commercial that might be supported by this level of residential. And I can really see this entire city block built out where it's primarily commercial, but again, you have only one, you know, corner tenant. But in this setting, because it is on our, you know, K Street corridor where we expected more commercial, you know, you might see a development that has that corner commercial, but then also has, you know, some retail going down the streets, and maybe we want to identify, like on K Street, we have a little bit more commercial, but in the other areas, we, you know, have access to more residential. Now, this is in the Gateway area, and so we had some priority for certain frontage looks, but no requirement on those uses inside. And so I'm just using this as an example so that when we start to think about commercial mixed use in other areas where we haven't already gone through a process to identify the types of uses that we want to see, that we're thinking about, you know, those uses? Do we want to mimic what we've seen in the Gateway where we're focused less on use and more on look? Or, you know, some other areas where we might want to really protect the commercial uses that are in those areas? So thinking about those larger-scale properties that might have more opportunity for commercial uses. The Valley West, again, we've got, you know, commercial mixed as the underlying property. We are going to go through a, you know, foreign-based zoning exercise for this area and really define what we want those areas to look like. But here's a good example, as you're, you know, familiar with the commercial uses in the Valley West, there's a lot of especially visitor-serving focus, you know, there's a lot of hotels, there's a lot of fast food, a lot of quick-service food. We have a dollar store, we have a, you know, Rais. But in particular, on that shopping center, there's a lot of, you know, parking area that could be converted to residential, even though that residential would be right on the street frontage. Maybe for this area, we want to focus on emphasizing commercial in that new development, recognizing there's already a substantial amount of commercial space. So instead of requiring any street frontage commercial, maybe we focus on areas like this where there's plenty of commercial and say, "Let's just pack in residential for any new development." This is an area where we probably don't want to lose a lot of commercial. We want to make sure that we still got that, you know, large-scale commercial activity going on, in particular because the Valley West area really is an area that people rely on for tourism, the hotels out there and that sort of thing, the RV park and et cetera. So again, slightly different standards based on existing conditions, you know, we'll get into the details when we get to there, but I just want to start thinking about the different styles of, even though it's all the same zoning district, there are different elements that we want to preserve. This is the Sunny Bray Shopping Center, commercial mixed use that serves literally the entire Sunny Bray. I was speaking to a colleague of mine who lives over in the Sunny Bray area, and they're actually in a spot where they are probably equidistant between Wildberries and the Sunny Bray Shopping Center, and that employee said, "No, the Sunny Bray Shopping Center is my go-to. I go to Murphy's when I go shopping, you know, all the time." So here's what's ostensibly a mixed-use zone has been for decades, really has predominance of commercial uses, and we're probably going to want to have standards that preserves those commercial uses, that doesn't drive out the Murphy's Shopping Center because this entire neighborhood relies on that commercial to satisfy their needs. So if we're looking to reduce VMT for these folks, that neighborhood shopping center is really critical. So we might want to develop standards in this area that are really emphasizing those above and behind types of residential uses because of these unique opportunities that this particular shopping center has. So you're starting to sense that just because it's commercial mixed use, we're not going to want to come up with one development standard across the board. There might be certain development standards that are shared across all of these, but we might want to focus in on key opportunities that are available in each of these areas. I'll just quickly ping through others just so that you're thinking about them. This is the, on 11th and Janes, the market's on the corner here, and this property is the project that you looked at recently with Kyle Bowden, who's proposing a mixed-use project on this site. And so there's a lot of opportunity for different types of standards to be applied in these different areas. I wanted to get your creative juices flowing thinking about those because the very next step is that in order to bridge the gap between what's in our Land Use Code and what's in our general plan, in order to fast-track projects as they're coming forward and not have to wait and wade through these conflicts between these, my office is going to be putting together a zoning interpretation. We will bring that zoning interpretation to the Planning Commission to, you know, get some buy-in with the decisions that we're making, and I will use this conversation to inform that zoning interpretation. But we're basically going to be making decisions like when it comes to a residential project, what density standard do we use? Now, we have some guidance from the state on this. The Housing Accountability Act says if you've got a residential, if residential is allowable in a zoning district and you've got a conflict between your general plan and your zoning standards, you go with whatever the highest standard is. And so if the zoning standard was higher than our general plan and we were looking to, you know, ratchet down that zoning over time, in the interim, we would go with the zoning standard. In this instance, our general plan has much higher densities than our zoning standards do, and so the zoning interpretation is going to be really clear. We have state law that says we interpret this as the highest density possible. But there are other areas, such as how much flexibility do we give in terms of the street frontage? We don't have a policy that explicitly states that we want to provide that flexibility, but that's been the conversation for the last couple of years in particular. And so I'd like some guidance, how we interpret these. So to sort of help drive the conversation, I did provide an attachment, A, an excerpt of new general plan 2045 Land Use Elements policies that I think are relevant to this conversation, as well as if you go into the next page, starting on packet page nine, you'll see the existing zoning standards. And I've pointed out in the bold text in these, in this document, some questions that I think you need to pay attention to or portions of the policy and/or zoning standard that I think you need to key into in your conversation. I don't think we necessarily need to go through these one for one, but you've all had an opportunity to, you know, take a look at these, and if you want to have a more, you know, sort of organic conversation about these standards and what you think needs to be included in a zoning interpretation to help guide us in the interim between now and when we come back with changed zoning standards, that would be very helpful for us. I'm happy to provide more if you need more facilitation through this conversation, but I'm also happy to sit back after this introduction and have your conversations sort of lead us towards, we think a zoning interpretation should at least include X, Y, and Z.
Okay, thank you for that, David. And just, just so we can be clear as we sort of begin talking through this, we're really just brainstorming. We're not trying to make a formal recommendation or approve specific language. This is more of a brainstorming session.
That's right. I would appreciate some guidance in terms of if the commission has a majority of folks that are leaning in one direction or the other, do this, don't do that. That would be helpful for me because I'm going to be responsible for developing a zoning interpretation with my staff on how we navigate these complexities, these conflicts, you know, over the course of, say, let's say, the next six to nine months before we start to adopt new codes to eliminate those conflicts, to change the zoning code so it's in line with our general plan.
I think, just to touch on one of the examples that you highlighted briefly before kind of pulling the commission into this discussion is the Murphy's. I don't see why that would have to be kind of an either-or, just using that example. Couldn't that be Murphy's on the ground floor with four or five stories of housing on top of Murphy's, which would sort of achieve some of the housing goals that we have and also underpin the business model of Murphy's, for example? Is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Yeah, it absolutely could. And if you look at LU1F on Attachment A, page eight, you know, the policy language basically reads, "Commercial developments should include residential uses where feasible or residential units are incorporated. Some ground-floor commercial should generally be maintained. Any residential developments and new structures shall comply with development standards of the applicable land use category." So therein lies the rub. We have this conflict, right? And so the question is, should we develop standards that allow 100% residential in some instances, such as in mid-block situations, such as in larger-scale developments, potentially in a situation like Murphy's where we want to preserve, you know, the commercial use? And so I can see a zoning interpretation that might say, you know, for neighborhood mixed-use commercials such as, and name them, you know, the Murphy's Market, the Old Arcata Road, you know, et cetera, et cetera. We want to retain these commercial uses and have a development standard that does preserve those uses on the ground floor so that the, if the market is really driving towards residential, we don't just say, "Yeah, you could develop commercial or residential in any commercial mixed-use area." And then someone comes in and says, "Well, I'm tearing down Murphy's in the Sunny Bray area, putting in 100% commercial, I'm sorry, residential, because I know that's what the market's driving for." And then we find ourselves in a position where we're like, "Well, hold on a second." That means everybody in that neighborhood then has to drive into the center of town to get, you know, their commercial needs met, their market needs met. So I would see, you know, a zoning interpretation identifying, you know, these neighborhood markets as probably retaining, at least in the interim, the commercial mixed-use standards that are in our code currently so that they have to have ground-floor commercial, but then potentially saying, you know, maybe in North Town, maybe in the Valley West, you know, we have more flexibility to have at least mid-block 100% residential, retaining maybe the corners to, you know, preserve corner markets, at least in the interim while we're doing a deeper dive on what that would mean for long-term standards, if that makes sense.
Sorry. So even if we all agree to flexing this, we still need to go through the zoning map case by case and decide which areas we lighten up the commercial and which areas keep it as-is?
Yeah, I'd want to come back with a specific recommendation in a zoning interpretation and a justification, process justification for how we implement that. And it would be based on, you know, I mean, at a parcel level, you could dig into that level of detail, but we'd be looking at it in these different commercial zoning district blocks.
And that's not what we're looking for tonight, specifics like that. We're saying like we're having a broader discussion in my sense?
Yeah, conceptually, is the Planning Commission okay with having, for instance, mid-block 100% residential in the North Town commercial mixed use and preserving the ground-floor commercial in Sunny Bray? Like, am I on the right track generally with that interpretation?
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, oh, sorry, Matt.
David, it seems to me the main thing I'm hearing is flexibility, that's something you said over and over again. I don't know exactly how we write that flexibility into the land use element and into the code, but that's something we need to do because, as you're pointing out, each situation is somewhat different. I'm not sure how to do that, but I think we need to.
Thanks, Peter. Matt, please.
So I'm leaning towards allowing more 100% residential projects, and the example that I thought of immediately was Sorrel Place, right, which is 100% residential, but it's, you know, it's on a corner in a commercial area, but it doesn't feel like it's taking away because you have these other commercial spots right next door, and so that gets to the sort of case-by-case nature of this, but I don't even think limiting it to mid-block is absolutely necessary in every case. I think you could see a corner project that's 100% residential that we're all supportive of, so that's just more to chew on, I guess. So that's just more to chew on, I guess.
And how would you feel in that, looking at the Murphy's situation through that lens?
I'd be really surprised, I guess, if Murphy's decided to take down a successful commercial business and make it 100% residential. I think that would hopefully then create demand to create more commercial nearby, right? If you had all these people living there, that's sort of the free-market idea of this. I guess having some sort of escape hatch, right, some sort of approval for these sort of things makes sense, but then you get run into the objective standard problem that we have. I don't have answers. I'm just, I'm making the pitch for, you know, because we've had so many projects that didn't work with commercial in them, and I think we have a lot of empty storefronts and a need for more residential units near them so that people can then run a business with people nearby to shop at that place. And so I don't, I don't want us to limit ourselves unnecessarily.
Yeah, I agree that Sorrel works there, but just to go back to Murphy's specifically, I do think that having that grocery store there supports the goal to reduce vehicle miles traveled in a way that would be a loss. And it wouldn't even necessarily be Murphy's deciding to do it if the property sold developer could make that decision irregardless of the impact on the people that live in that neighborhood and count on Murphy's. So I'd like to see that, those, I think balancing housing construction with not losing those centers that allow for more pedestrian and bike traffic to groceries and less driving is a good thing.
The one thing that I'll add to this is that, you know, we're thinking about this in terms of the current condition. So Murphy's is there currently, and that's, you know, a neighborhood benefit that they have a market nearby, and it reduces VMT because they don't have to go further to get market goods. But the reality is that our zoning code would not be that specific. We would say commercial. And so Murphy's could still close, you know, under the current standards, Murphy's could still close, and they could build residential on top and have some other type of retail under the current standards. So I think, I think that is sort of the question here, you know, do we try and, like with the gateway, we basically said, look, you know, let's largely ignore the uses. There are some limitations on, you know, certain types of uses. Let's largely ignore the uses. Let's focus on design and make sure that, you know, at least in certain areas where, you know, we would tend to think, like on main, you know, arterials, it makes sense to have commercial uses. Let's at least ensure that they're, you know, convertible, it's commercial uses, that they have a commercial look and feel, and that they don't, you know, present a, you know, facade that is, runs counter to the sort of streetscape design that we're trying to develop there. So, you know, that philosophy could be applied in other areas. And then, you know, as Vice Chair Simmons is pointing out, you know, allow the, you know, the market to drive the proportion while we still retain, you know, design standards, objective design standards that would allow for, you know, ultimate conversion to, you know, commercial if they decided to go 100% residential.
And what exactly, is that a zoning administrator decision or is that something that would come back to the Planning Commission?
I mean, at this point, we're not talking process. At this point, we're just talking about like, you know, where, where do we want to start? So, you know, our, there's two questions. The first question is, you know, what does a zoning interpretation look like that leads us through this next six, nine-month period, maybe year and a half, before we have new zoning standards? We need to be able to approve projects. I need to develop a process. When it comes to a project that has, you know, housing component, I have a lot of tools at my disposal to assist an interpretation that are based on state law. When it comes to a commercial project, not much. You know, there's not a lot of guidance there. And so I would like to have a zoning interpretation that helps us navigate all of those different conflicts that we've created now between the general plan and the zoning code. So this conversation is going to help inform that zoning interpretation. Things that we'll be applying day one, each of those is going to have probably a different process depending on the kind of project it is, and some of those the Planning Commission may see. The second thing that we're getting out of this conversation is really to help us develop a starting point to have a conversation with the community. These are probably going to have a lot of overlap. The Venn diagram is going to overlap quite a bit because whatever the zoning interpretation that we develop is going to be sort of like the draft proposal for how we approach these with the community. And then we'll go through a process with our, you know, consultant, the community, to hone in on specifically what do those standards look like. So those are really my two objectives tonight, and they're kind of, you can think of them as one and the same, but I just want to be clear that there's two outcomes from this conversation.
I get that, and that's specifically why I was asking about the process because I know from the community standpoint, a situation in which projects come to the Planning Commission provides some public input and oversight that's important. I'd love to check in with Abby and Joel and see if you guys have anything to add to this conversation or any specific concerns you'd like to see included.
I kind of wanted to touch on what Matt was saying about the mid, like being specifically stating mid-block and maybe not using that precise language or figuring out a way to somehow include a provision for, or may generally maintain, commercial. But yeah, that's it for me right now.
Yeah, I mean, this is very theoretical. I mean, there are, I agree that we need flexibility. And the other thought I have is that the extent we, you know, encourage residential, which, you know, is a clear need, that'll drive commercial and, you know, when and how and where, you know, I don't think we have a crystal ball, but in terms of the specifics for now, I would be in favor of allowing as much flexibility as possible if the issue is mid-block, you know, residential or even corner residential. If there's enough commercial preserved, I would be supportive of that. Can we use sort of general wording that provides that kind of flexibility rather than mid-block? Just saying something like a mix of residential and commercial as, you know, as is appropriate for the area? I mean, something that's pretty vague that gives either the Planning Commission or you, the zoning administrator, some discretion as to what you approve.
We certainly can. The question is going to remain, if it's a commercial mixed-use, does it have to have a commercial component? And if so, when? And if the decision at this point is, hey, look, we want to see maximum flexibility, then I would be writing a zoning interpretation that would allow basically any commercial mixed-use site to have 100% or, you know, you know, no requirements for street frontage of commercial. So 100% residential or no requirements for street frontage commercial. There's a process that, you know, I can, you know, pull out from existing regulation that would allow us to do that. There's prob, I mean, I'm kind of guessing at this point, but there's probably going to be a lot of like zoning administrator and planning commission decisions on those currently because of the conflict in code. But it would provide that based on, you know, say LU1F that we just read, that there's no specification that any particular parcel have commercial, but that quote-unquote generally commercial would be maintained. And so we would say over the course of several decisions, we still see commercial in this area. We're relying on the, you know, the market to provide additional commercial when it's needed, and we could, you know, retain that sort of more flexible interpretation until such time that, you know, there's a concern that, you know, we're starting to lose our commercial centers. And so that's certainly an interpretation I'd be willing to write that has that maximum flexibility.
And just to be clear, this is, excuse me, to operate until the new zoning is complete?
It would be to operate until the new zoning is complete, and then it would be the framework for the draft that we start fleshing out with the community. The components that I would see as being, you know, very temporary in that interim period have a lot to do with the process. Obviously, the, you know, if the Planning Commission says, look, let's have maximum flexibility, and over the interim period, you know, we start having a lot of 100% residential projects come through, and then there's this, you know, policy crisis, we'd have to revisit. But the components that are, you know, there's going to be a lot more process and discretion associated with that process between now and when we have new standards developed. I think it's clear that this commission and certainly the council has stated that they want to move more towards form-based codes that have more of a ministerial review based on objective standards. And so that's what the HUD Pro Housing Grant is designed to drive us towards. So I would see our process in the future with the new zoning being much more geared towards ministerial decisions. And my hope is that between now and that timeframe, we'll have the opportunity to, you know, to evaluate what does this Planning Commission ministerial permit look like? How does that feel to the Planning Commission? How does it feel to the public to be holding these public hearings to make a ministerial decision? And that'll help inform, you know, our future zoning when it comes to that question.
Yeah, this sounds contrary to the direction that I feel like we've been moving in terms of objective standards. I think of our ministerial permits as being based on objective standards so that you're not put in the hot seat trying to make decisions and interpret what we meant back then and, you know, scratching through notes and such. It troubles me to think of you having to decide how much commercial somebody has to do to kind of fit, check that box, you know, if he says, well, David, can I just put one of those bike rentals barracks out front? Is that commercial enough? You know, can we just call this, you know, that check the box so I can build out residential? And you have to make that decision? And I don't know, it just, this all is discomforting in terms of objective standards.
What I'm hearing right now from the majority of the Planning Commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, is maximum flexibility, which would translate into no requirement for commercial on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
And if that's what we're deciding so that you don't have to interpret it later over the counter, I'm fine with that, but we have to then go through parcel-by-parcel. The Sunny Bray situation is really different than the North Town one, I think we all agree, or mid-block or whatever. You know, we can just argue that out or try to come up with something, but whatever we decide, if it's parcel-by-parcel, this is what it is for this parcel, you know? It's different on the Plaza than it is in North Town or, you know?
David, if it turned out that we got residential after residential after residential and we were kind of pushing out commercial spaces, could we revisit that and say, you know, this has gone too far?
Absolutely. Yeah, and so during the interim phase, it would be as simple as revising the zoning interpretation. There's going to be a process in the zoning interpretation. Right now, let me just, you know, get a little more specific. Right now, if a project were to come in and I looked at my land use code and they're in the commercial mixed-use zone, it states that you need to have frontage, commercial. You can have residential above or behind. So that's unambiguous. And it further states, if you look in your packet on page 13, the little graphic that shows, you know, the cross-section of a mixed-use development, it's showing furthermore that the first 75 feet in depth of a mixed-use project has to be commercial. Many of our commercial properties, many of our mixed-use properties aren't even 75 feet deep. This was made, this standard was made in a vacuum. The standard was made in a planner's brain somewhere outside of Arcata. And so when we try and interpret this, when we try and implement this, it leads to ridiculous conclusions. So this is, I'm really excited about the opportunity to think about it in the context of Arcata and make standards that are specific to us. But this is the standard right now, is that the first 75 feet, everything on the ground floor facing the street frontage needs to be commercial. And so if the Planning Commission tells me, look, we've, previously, we had policy that supported that, now we have new policy that doesn't support that, and the Planning Commission says, we want to see maximum flexibility so that there's no requirement for commercial on the entire frontage, and we're going to allow the market to drive projects, I can write a zoning interpretation that's going to give us that flexibility based on the policy direction that we have. However, there's going to have to be a permit process that's associated with that in the near term. And so those permit processes would probably be, you know, minor use permit to amend the zoning standard or something like that. You know, I'm rough sketching here. I need to really dig down into the code to see what the actual process would look like. But let's say for the sake of this discussion, it's going to be a minor use permit, design review to eliminate those standards and allow for residential in direct conflict with, you know, this standard, this design standard. The Planning Commission would have to look at that, or the zoning administrator would have to look at that depending on the design review table, which is the review authority. And so if I get direction from the Planning Commission, make it maximally flexible so that on a project-by-project basis, you know, folks can come in with 100% residential projects, they could do residential on the street frontage, which is what we've been talking about, you know, modifying, we've been talking about going that direction. I will write the zoning interpretation that says, this standard can be overwritten by a minor use permit that follows the design review table. That design review table has a zoning authority at either the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission, depending on the size of the project. And if folks came in with those projects, we would permit them that way. During this interim period, you would get to see this handful of projects that came in, and if at any time during this interim period, you said, well, hold on, tap the brakes, this has gotten out of control already, we have five projects approved and 10 projects pending, and we want to slow the bus down, I would write a new zoning interpretation that says, we're no longer interpreting it that way. You have to apply the existing standards until we have a new set of standards, until we've gone through a new public process. That new public process would then, you know, give us that new set of standards. If more likely outcome is a handful of projects come in, the Planning Commission likes where they see it going, the council is in, you know, you know, they're happy as well. When we start to go through that process to revise this code, we would say, we've got a, we've got a good template, we're going to start with this as our template for a draft, we're going to float that out to the community, we're going to go through that process, and we're likely to end up with a ministerial approval process that is based on specific standards, specific objective standards, and doesn't require that discretion anymore. If in the future, after that new standard is adopted and the Planning Commission and the city council is like, hold on, you know, things are getting out of control, we need to tap the brakes, at that point, you would have to do a zone amendment to change the zoning that had been adopted. But in this interim period, we can change that on, you know, basically, I just rewrite the zoning interpretation.
I think it's important that the Planning Commission has that opportunity to weigh in during especially this interim period for two reasons. Not only because it gives the public a chance to see and weigh in, but also it's going to give us then that direct input on making these tweaks that will allow us to improve this approach as we approach finalizing the new zoning. So like for me, that maximum flexibility, I feel comfortable with it as long as the Planning Commission, I'm not trying to create more work for the Planning Commission, but I feel like especially in this interim period, it's important that we have that oversight for the community and also to improve our ability to give feedback on this as we see projects come through. I'm interested what other commissioners think.
I mean, if we're looking at the gateway, which isn't supposed to have to come through us, as long as they fit the us as long as they fit the form-based code and all of the standards, then what would be the scenario where they suddenly do have to come to us?
Well, it just seems like there are some, a number of projects that are outside of the form-based code. And so, the goal would be to, after the next year, year and a half, when we can finalize this zoning, at that point, it's a zoning administrator. But as we're working it out, and as we saw just the variety of projects that don't, where there are inherent conflicts, it feels like an important place for us to weigh in because in the absence of that form-based code.
So, the maximum flexing of the commercial standards that you just spoke of would, basically, my interpretation of that is that unless we want to carve out Sunny Bray or a couple other specific locations, that street frontage "commercial," as described in the existing code, would not exist unless we, as you described, tap the brakes after five or seven projects down the way. Is it my...
Yeah, I would write a zoning interpretation that would interpret it that way. There would still be process, our existing process, to, to resolve the conflict that we have in the code. So, many projects would come directly...
But behind the scenes, not here.
No, many projects would come directly to the Planning Commission. My assumption at this point, I haven't delved into this in detail, but my assumption at this point, based on, you know, my knowledge of the code, is that we would be processing these, like, minor use permit design reviews. Minor use permit design reviews, larger projects or projects in certain areas go to the Planning Commission, smaller projects go to the zoning administrator. And we could set it up so that our zoning interpretation says that projects that use this zoning interpretation, that go to the zoning administrator, are reported out to the Planning Commission, just so that you hear and see all of the projects that are going on.
Okay, that's what you're talking about. So, the minor use permit is just because there's conflict in the zoning code...
Exactly.
...until it catches up?
Exactly.
Okay, so it's not a full approval of the project because hopefully there's a lot of objective standards, but the minor use permit because of the conflict about the "commercial" aspect is what we would have to just sign off on.
Resolving some inherent code zoning conflict.
All right, I'm caught up. Thank you.
How's everyone feel about that? Okay, I think we're on the same page there. So, does that get you what you need to dive into the next portion of what you need to do?
I think it does. I'm going to assume, and actually, I'm not going to assume, I'm going to ask, that maximum flexibility also applies to the parking standards that we have a conflict with, whereas the "commercial mixed-use" has high parking standard threshold, and our policy has said we want to eliminate parking standards citywide, similar interpretation.
Does anyone object to that flexibility, including parking standards? Okay.
Thank you.
Good, all right. Well, thank you.
Now, can I, is, sorry, pause. Isn't there a density question that we also need to resolve?
The density question likewise. Right now, the policy states that there's no maximum density, that we use the standards to limit density. And with that, I mean, I would love a thumbs up from the commission, but with that standard, that specific standard, the Housing Accountability Act already sort of supersedes any local standard we have or interpretation. We have to apply that higher density. So, currently, you're going to see projects that, you know, unless they take a density bonus, are capping out at four stories. So, it's not going to be a dramatic, you know, increase in building height over what we already approve. But you may see, for example, on the, on the Ramen place where they want to do "commercial mixed-use," there's currently, under the zoning standard, an allowable three units, whereas the project proponent wanted to do something more like 30 units. And so, this would allow the flexibility for them to come in and actually build out 30 units.
This is Northtown, the parking lot right behind the Ramen place that's recently opening or something.
Correct.
Matt, go ahead, please.
Also, first of all, I support the no maximum density, but then I also, and you highlighted it in the packet, but the, talking about our current standards, I think, is something that maybe we don't have to do tonight, but we could revisit at some point, like the maximum floor area ratio of 2.0 feels a little low to me. I don't know, 35 feet feels a little low to me, but not something we have to do right the second, but just something to flag.
David, a question. If, just carrying this forward, after the zoning, after the interim period, if the commission or the council sees a need to change something because things aren't going in a direction that we'd hoped, that requires the council to pass an ordinance? I'm asking.
Yeah, so the interim period with the zoning interpretation will help bridge the gap between now and when we have a new ordinance that establishes those standards for "commercial mixed-use." The hope is that over the course of this next, you know, six, nine months, year, that we are learning and going through the public process and delving into the specific standards and building out a code that we want to see. And then, once that's adopted, that, those objective standards and that process, whether it's ministerial or whatever the process is, once that's adopted, if then we're dissatisfied with the results, it does require a new ordinance. And, you know, those can happen relatively quickly. I mean, I know that, you know, past practice does not, you know, guarantee future performance. We just had a process that, you know, we anticipated was going to take two years, three years, take eight years. The reality is that a zoning ordinance takes one Planning Commission meeting and two city council meetings. It can be done in two months. It can be effective in three. And so, if there's an emergency going on, you can even adopt an urgency ordinance, you know, to have a moratorium on certain standards. And so, there's a lot of flexibility that if the, you know, worst-case scenario came to fruition, the city still has flexibility to, you know, to tap the brakes. But all of this that we're talking about tonight is really in alignment with the conversations that we've been having, you know, certainly in earnest over the last three or four years, and from concept, you know, the past eight.
Great. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add to this discussion or questions for David? Okay, I think we're ready to wrap this up then. Having finished both of our business items, I'd like to move on to correspondence and communications and check and see if we have any correspondence from Planning Commission members this evening. Matt?
Next week is the week without driving, Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I took the pledge. I encourage my fellow Planning Commissioners to do so as well, and just think about how you would get around our community without a car.
Thanks for that. Matt? Dan, did you have something to add?
Yeah, a while back, the city staff forwarded to our emails, suggested podcast, an interview with Ezra Klein. I recently listened to it again, and I think it's a fabulous podcast that we all should re-up on before we meet with the city council to discuss, well, the topics on the agenda for that. And I'd like to be reminded what night that is.
That'll be October 30th, and you get bonus points if you come dressed in your Halloween costume.
Can I dress as a commissioner?
Okay. You can dress as a commissioner, yes.
Okay, that sounds great. Correspondence from staff this evening, David?
I don't have anything of note this evening.
All right.
Might I ask staff, we have a meeting scheduled for the 22nd with the meeting also on the 30th. Is it likely the 22nd will still happen, or is it too early to say?
We, you know, that's a great question. We do have right now nothing planned for the 8th, and I also have a conflict on the 8th, which is your first meeting in October. And so, I guess if the Planning Commission wants to cancel those meetings, I would like to try and keep the momentum so we can continue the conversation about all of these, you know, long-range planning projects that are, you know, coming up and to make sure that we, you know, keep our, you know, our mojo. So, it's up to you all, if you want to retain the 8th and have that conversation, I can have somebody come in my place and then cancel the 22nd, or cancel the 22nd, I'm sorry, cancel the 8th and have the 22nd, and then have the October 30th as well.
I have no skin in the game here. I'm happy to go with either or both.
I won't be present on the 22nd if we do have a meeting, so.
Should we just wait to hear from staff whether or not they have enough agenda items to schedule a meeting?
Yeah, that would be my preference. Something may come up now. I feel like it's a little early to make that call, and we can cancel closer to the meeting if need be. And my preference would be to cancel while you're away for continuity and then pick back up when you return. So, let's just keep in touch about agenda items, David, per usual. Okay, everyone, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.